Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Waukam County Council Meeting. On, today is January tenth, two thousand and seventeen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Rudd Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Present.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sat Paul Sadoo. Carl Weimer.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the plaid.
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a couple announcements before we get rolling. One is if you have your cellphone with you tonight, please either put it on vibrate or off so we don't have any interruptions. Also, if you'll be handing out any paperwork tonight to council members, please remember to give our staff a copy so they have it for our records. And we thank you in advance for that. We had four items that we met this morning in executive session and committee of the whole. First item was discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Elizabeth Galory regarding pending litigation. There was no action taken. We had discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding pending litigation Hearst et al. versus Waukam County Growth Management's Hearing Board case. No action was taken. We had a discussion with Senior Deputy Prosecutor Elizabeth Galory regarding another pending litigation case in the case of Robert L. King versus Waukam County Lieutenant Statch, Sergeant Otten, Sergeant Fair, and Deputy Reed. In executive session, the council reviewed the lawsuit that was filed in the United States District Court and affirmatively finds the provisions of Waukam County Code, Chapter two point five, six point oh thirty, provisions A, B, and C are met. And those are: the officials or employees were acting in a manner in which the county had an interest; B, the officials or employees were acting in the discharge of duty imposed or authorized by law; and C, the officials or employees did act in good faith. I would entertain a motion to affirm that. Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with council member Sadoo excused. The third item was introduction to our new labor negotiator and discussion of strategy planning and positions to be taken regarding collective bargaining. There was no action taken. So we will move to some minutes we have to approve. First set was regular county council for July twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, and the second set was from the surface water work session for November fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll move approval.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I got them.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero.
I'm abstaining.
You're going to abstain? Okay. Five to zero with council member Donovan abstaining and council member Sadoo excused. Next order of business is the annual reorganization of the Waukam County Council. We have a pink version with replacement pages.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to start by nominating Barry Buchanan for council chair.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Well, thank you, Barbara.
Oh, no, he's good.
Okay, Mr. Buchanan has been nominated. Is there any other nominations?
Who would dare?
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Moving on to vice chair. I will reciprocate and I will nominate Mr. Rudd Brown.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Brown signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Executive pro tem.
I'll nominate Carl Weimer.
And I'll second that. We have Mr. Weimer nominated. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
Before we go any further, there was a glitch in the original one, which is why we got the pink one. And the ones on my column that are orange have, they're crossed through, those were not the ones I put my name for. The other ones are, and those are the ones I've been on.
The green ones.
Yeah, the green ones.
Okay. Before we get to that, we have one other thing just to, just so the public knows, the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors for the Flood Control Zone District is the council chair. So, put a check mark there. We will move to our standing committees. The first one is Finance Administrative Services. Do we have any nominations?
I'm sorry, what?
Okay, I'll nominate Rudd and Sat Paul and myself.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It works.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of those folks say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next committee is Planning and Development. We have four people for three spots. Ms. Brenner?
I'll nominate myself.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Of course, you could let me be on the committee by my own.
I've been on that one, but I, I mean, I'm going to go anyway. So whether I'm officially on the committee or not doesn't really matter to me.
So, why don't we, if you don't care?
Would you like to withdraw?
Yeah, I can do that.
Let's do that. Makes it easier.
But you're stuck with me one way or the other.
That's okay. I like you.
So I will, I will add to Barbara's motion if she'll allow me.
Sure.
And I will also nominate Mr. Brown and Mr. Weimer.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Public Works Health and Safety.
I will nominate myself, Mr. Mann, and Ms. Brenner for that one, so I guess I'm transferring.
Second.
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Natural Resources. I'll nominate Mr. Donovan, Mr. Sadoo, and Mr. Weimer.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. We would now, out of those three, we need two of those to serve on the Lake Waukam Policy Group.
So it has to be, yeah, okay, gotcha.
Two from the planning, or two from Natural Resources.
Okay, you guys.
I'll nominate myself and Carl if he wants to continue doing it.
I would love to have another council member have the opportunity to learn about Lake Waukam, so.
You don't want to do it?
There is a choice.
The other person on the committee is Mr. Sadoo, and he's not here, so that's a slam dunk.
All right, I nominate Sat Paul Sadoo.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
When you're not here, that things can happen.
That's pretty typical, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second those nominations. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously with one of our victors out of the, excuse. Next is Bellingham International Advisory Airport Advisory Committee.
Nominate Sadoo.
I'll second.
Any other? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Bellingham-Waukam Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
I'll nominate Mr. Brown.
Okay, second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next was Birch Bay Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee. I nominate Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Council of Governments. We will appoint two members to serve on the full council to begin with. Ms. Brenner?
I'll nominate Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Sadoo.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Mr. Donovan as well. Nobody hasn't asked for it.
Were you going to take your name off?
I'm, I'm, I've done it. I'm happy to surrender it to you if you'd like the experience.
How many, where do they meet and how often?
Once a month, afternoons downtown.
I can do that.
Okay.
Well, it depends which position you're in.
Wait.
The full council only, the full council only meets twice a year.
Correct.
So one rep has to attend two meetings in a year.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to let you continue if it's something you want to do.
He's going to do it.
And I'm, and I'm happy to do it as well.
Okay.
Let Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown continue.
Yeah.
Then leave it, leave the slate stand as it is.
Well, next time I'll.
Okay, so we'll leave it as Mr. Brown and Mr. Sadoo are nominated. And I'll second it just because I don't know if anybody did. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Council of Governments appoint one of those two to also serve on the Executive Board and the Transportation Policy Board, which is the position that meets more often. So like once a month.
Well, Sat Paul's not here, so.
Well, does Councilmember Brown want to do it?
I've already done that one.
But you want to do it again?
Um, I'd like to nominate Sat Paul for it.
I'll second that.
Then I'll nominate Sat Paul.
Okay, Mr. Sadoo has been nominated and seconded. Any, any other? No, we don't do it that way, though. There are only one. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Developmental Disabilities Board. Ms. Brenner?
I'll nominate Ken Mann.
And I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Drayton Harbor Shellfish Protection District. Ms. Brenner?
I'll nominate Todd Donovan.
Okay.
You did put your name in.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the EMS Oversight Board Representative. Ms. Brenner?
Uh, Barry, Councilmember Buchanan.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the alternate rep for the EMS Oversight Board. I'll nominate Mr. Sadoo.
Second.
Okay, any other? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the ex officio position on the Flood Control Zone Committee. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
I'll nominate Councilmember Brown.
And I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. Ms. Brenner?
I will nominate Ken Mann, even though there's two, because he's been doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
You have.
And unless Mr. Mann wishes to relinquish it, well, sorry, wants to relinquish it, I will withdraw.
Oh, yeah, do you want to?
I'll stick with it.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second, I don't think I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Mann has been nominated and a second. And if any, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Intergovernmental Tribal Relations Committee.
Mr. Chair, I will withdraw.
Mr. Brown is withdrawing.
Who else is going to withdraw?
So that leaves, three of us have signed up for that. Ms. Brenner, you had your hand up?
I really want to stay on that committee, and I do go to those, the functions for the, for both of the tribes quite a bit, so.
And I would relinquish unless you were going to do the same thing.
I was going to do the same thing. I always wanted to be on a committee that is never met, but.
Well, it's gonna, you know what? It's gonna start meeting. It really is. It's gonna happen.
Okay, I would, I would love to, to do it and, and.
Yeah.
And make things happen.
Because we both show up at this stuff all the time.
So I'll nominate Mr. Buchanan. And Mr. Weimer, you?
I've withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay.
So Brenner and Buchanan have been nominated?
Yes.
I second that.
Okay, any other nominations?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo out of, excuse. Next is the Integrated Behavioral Health Advisory Board, which.
I will withdraw.
You will withdraw? I nominate Ms. Brenner.
Second.
We have a second as well. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Jail Stakeholder Work Group. There was some confusion here. Todd and I have served on it since its inception. However, somehow we both missed it on this sheet and we didn't sign up for it.
Who would like to?
Rudd signed up for it.
If you've already been doing it, I will withdraw.
Okay.
Okay, so who's going to do it? Barry?
Todd and I, yeah.
It's two? Oh, that's right. There you go.
Hopefully it will keep going.
Yeah.
It's two?
I didn't realize that. Oh, I should have.
So do we have a nomination?
Barry and Todd.
So I nominate Mr. Donovan and Mr. Buchanan.
Okay, who has a second?
Second.
Okay, we have, any other nominations?
One more meeting.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is, next is the Left Board, which is Law Enforcement and Firefighters Board for the Retirement. I nominate Mr. Mann.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
I'll nominate Mr. Donovan.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee. This is a non-voting attendee. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
I will nominate Todd Donovan.
And I'll second that. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee Alternates. We need two alternates.
We got them.
And I would nominate Mr. Mann and Ms. Brenner.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
I have a question, so, yeah, I'm happy to do this, but I don't remember ever being called upon to attend a meeting, so does that mean Mr. Donovan?
Todd does a good job.
Half of their meetings are when we meet on Tuesday nights.
That's right. If we can't do it, yeah. I told them about that.
There's probably one I missed I could have, I didn't know we had an alternate.
We've got two, two alternates. All right. Well, yeah, I'm happy to go some, you know, whenever you can't make it, if it's, if it's.
It's a great trip out.
If it's not a council night.
It's Tuesday, the Beach Door Cafe is not open, though.
Oh. Well, they should change the date. Not only are we not available, but the cafe is not open.
No, most, it's, about half the time it's when we're meeting, but, or not.
I think it's more than that.
And they do one or two meetings a year here in town. But mostly it's out there at the fireball.
We have a nomination and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Marine Resources Committee.
I nominate Mr. Weimer.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is North Sound Mental Health Administration Board.
Nominate Mr. Mann.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just so you guys know, it's, we, we, the name of that organization is now North Sound Behavioral Health Organization.
Yeah.
And it's the executive committee. It's not a board anymore.
Oh, okay.
It's gotten politically correct.
Well, no, we, we, remember, we were only mental health, and then we took on all of the substance use disorder services as well in the five county region, so we changed the name to be more inclusive.
Um, one, one quick piece of business. I didn't call for opposing votes yet. So we, we already voted in the affirmative and then.
I just want to comment.
So, any opposed to Mr. Mann? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Yes, Ms. Brenner?
I just wanted to comment. I don't think somebody can have a substance abuse problem without having a mental health issue. It just doesn't happen, so I think mental health advisory or organization was just fine. I think it got politically corrected. Whatever.
We can talk about that.
Oh, yeah.
Some other time.
We will do that.
Next up is Northwest Clean Air Agency.
Nominate Mr. Weimer.
I second that. We have, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Northwest Regional Council.
I'll nominate Mr. Sadoo to continue in that capacity.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused.
Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw from the next one.
You'll withdraw from the Opportunity Council? And I would nominate Mr. Weimer.
Second.
We, do we have any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Portage Bay Shellfish Protection District.
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate Mr. Weimer.
Second.
Don't you want to be on that?
Okay.
Wait, Mr. Weimer?
No, I don't know why that's green here.
Oh.
No, I, I'm, I, I don't, I have a different version.
So, yeah.
I didn't put it. I'm going to start going to the meetings, but I didn't put in the B.
No. Well, just a glitch, so, yeah, it was.
So that's not supposed to be there?
No.
Okay.
It's not on the original.
Okay, Mr. Weimer's been nominated and a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Public Defense Advisory Board.
And, Mr. Chair, as Ms. Brenner wishes to continue, I'll withdraw.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'd like to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll withdraw.
I will, I will then nominate Ms. Brenner.
That would probably help, yeah.
And Mr. Donovan seconded. Any further nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is the Public Health Advisory Board.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw from that one as well.
Okay.
Surprise you pay for putting your name down for everything.
I'll nominate Barry. Well, that's good that you, just in case, had, that we had that backup of Councilmember Brown. I will move, I'm sorry, I will nominate Councilmember Buchanan.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Solid Waste Advisory. I'll nominate Mr. or Ms. Brenner.
Second.
We, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sadoo excused. Next is Washington State Association of Counties Alternate Board Member.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put my name forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Brown is nominated with a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sedu, excuse. Next is the Washington State Association of Counties Legislative Steering Committee.
I'll nominate Mr. Brown.
And I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The, uh, opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sedu, uh, excuse. Uh, last but not least is the Wacom Transportation Authority. And I would nominate Mr. Sedu.
Second.
He's been moved and seconded. Any, uh, other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu, excuse.
Nicely done.
All right. We will now move into the open session. This is where audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue that's relevant to council business. Before, uh, beginning to comment, please state your name and topic of interest for the record. And if your last name is something that's complicated, please spell it so the clerk can get that into the record. Uh, make sure you speak directly into the microphone because sometimes it can get a little hard to hear, uh, and stand behind the signs until the person, uh, speaking before you is finished. And we thank you in advance for your cooperation. I will now open the open session.
Opening mic for the year, here I go. Mike Kaufman. Uh, briefly before I start, I always thought that it would be great to turn one of these podiums this way. Because in some respect, I know that I'm here to address you guys, but in a small way, I'm actually addressing the community also. And I could have the choice between one or the other. It's just a thought that I have. I'm here tonight, uh, I, when I cast my vote for the EMS levy, I said no. And my vote would, uh, for no would be meaningless if I didn't come and tell the council why I did that. And so I'm here to express my feelings as to why I did that. And, um, it wasn't because I don't have the money. I've been blessed in my life with having a good life and having a decent brain that's gotten me this far to be an gray-haired bald guy. And, uh, there's a whole big subset of reasons in my head that go around from federal to state to local. But the reason that I did it is that I want to see our community fund mental health, homelessness, and the care providers that give to these people and get pittances for the work that they do, in my opinion. I see the police running around in great cars and, and, and they're represented by a union and they get paid pretty darn well, I believe. But it, it just, till we fund that properly. And it goes back, I guess, one of the things to be, to try and say it is, my father, you know, back when I was a kid, and, and he had my first car, and I'm on the side of the road, and he goes, "Mike, when you own something, you know, you got to learn to do the maintenance first." Because if you don't do the maintenance, you're going to be on the side of the road and it's going to cost you a way lot more money later on to do this. And let's give a case in point. Let's look at the Florida shootings that happened last week in Flor- in, uh, in Florida. A veteran who gave his time to our nation. We support the troops. It's lip service. He went to the FBI asking for help, is what we hear. The FBI says, "We're not dealing with this. Here, give them to the police." The police go, "Our guns won't do anything for this guy. Here, let's give them to the mental health." And in the mental health, he pops out the end, nobody's looking after him. Now it's going to cost us millions of dollars...
Thirty seconds, please.
...to take care of this issue. People are dead. Probably costs more than 15 minutes in just automobile relating to the scene than there, than it would have cost to help that man and gain his life back and be a vital member of our society. And until we fund that, we are going to spend tons more money with our police and our, and I am not going to spend a vote on yes until I see movement in that direction. That's my feeling and opinion. Thank you.
I'm here to speak to the Critical Area Ordinance. Um, I don't know what you decided to do this afternoon regarding scheduling, but I'd like to urge you not to approve Article Two and Article Five because they need substantial work. And Article Two in particular, um, you can't really read that by itself because it sets out some of the rules and restrictions and exemptions for critical area ordinances, um, for different critical areas. But then you actually have to go to each of the different critical area ordinances and add on. So you don't really get the full effect of what Article Two is doing because it's sort of piecemealed out from each of the individual critical areas. And so you really need to sort of do that, do it first and do it last, so you understand how it works and then go back and put it all together, if that makes sense. The other thing that's really crucial, this, um, perversion of the Critical Area Ordinance did not, it, it basically didn't update almost anything, but the, one of the most important updates that wasn't included was a change in what's protected. It's not just critical areas anymore. It's critical areas and the ecosystems in which they are found. So now we've taken an ecosystem approach and we have to protect ecosystems. And we have a, um, a Critical Area Ordinance that is still built on site-specific review. And I think you can see automatically there's going to be an inherent conflict there. In fact, one of the, um, Wax, I'm sorry, the Washington Administrative Code says that certain types of critical areas, like, um, habitat conservation areas and wetlands, by their nature are going to be more extensive than the development site. And that the, um, the scope of the review needs to be commensurate with the critical area and ecosystem that you are reviewing. Um, so, that was not addressed. Um, my understanding was that the staff indicated that they had reviewed information or were working on the PIC program, um, to deal with some problems. And I just wanted to let you know, that is not, um, a substitute for what's required under the GMA. And, um...
Thirty seconds, please.
The hearings board has gotten much stricter in interpreting, um, cases that come on appeal in terms of compliance issues. And one of the things they've said is, "We don't care what kind of state and federal laws exist." The obligation to protect critical areas and ecosystems, um, under the GMA has been placed in counties. And the counties are responsible for making sure that the GMA requirements are met. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amy Glasser. Welcome back. Um, I wanted to emphasize what Wendy just said about making really clear what you guys are looking at for the Critical Area Ordinances and reviewing everything. Um, with the Hirsch decision coming down about water, I'm hoping that the council, instead of trying to figure out a way to have legislators change it, is for us to actually use it and figure out a way for us to make sure that water is available the way it's supposed to be for first rights, um, first. And then we go from there. So, that's about water. Um, I would also like to ask the council to consider selling the property that was bought for the Ferndale La Bounty Road jail. Um, it's a huge piece of property and it's in a place where it's not conducive to the court, it's not conducive to visitors, it's not conducive to bus systems. It's, uh, in an area where there's a lot of pollution right around there, so in terms of any kind of, well, it's going to be much better for inmates in terms of, um, climate outside. I think there's a whole bunch of different chemical waste problems and there's one particular area on the site that might have some contamination that hasn't really been explored very well. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to consider selling the property, um, hopefully making a profit, but it's a, a huge amount of money for the county and I think we can use it in a way that the first gentleman talked about in terms of, uh, working to prevent incarceration rather than dealing with it after it happens, which, critical, is mental health services, housing first. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of trying to develop some new housing. However, I think that kind of money, um, can be creatively used for housing for homeless people who are probably a good portion of the people who create the crime in our community. And if they have housing and stable housing, there's going to be a much less likelihood of them doing crime and a much more likelihood that they're going to receive benefits and services and actually follow through with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, actually, that didn't help sitting here listening to the folks come up and talk because, um, we have the mental health issue, but yet we spend all of our time talking about land, water, protect the environment, save the salmon. Well, we had 25 years of this GMA to go, to look at what the results have been. This thing's got to go. Not any up here, like, I come up here and rant, and I know I do. I don't think any one of you is a stupid person. I think you're all individually very bright people. It's just collectively. And it's collectively not just you guys. It's the people on the Hirsch team that brought that all together. I know you talked about your defense of the Hirsch, um, against, you know, the lawsuits and what you put as against it. But the reality is, is for the majority of you here, you drink from the same cup, Stalheim, Melius, Hirsch. You drink from that same cup. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you guys are just in lockstep. Ideologically, the same. And it blinds you. And I had to think about that a little bit, is as a kid, we grew up out in the country and we, we would go to town and it was always a big trip, right? Once every three weeks or whatever? Well, we'd pick up this neighbor lady and her mentally challenged son, who was about 30 and we were probably seven, eight years old. We'd ride in the back of the station wagon, the old Woody, and we'd go into town and we'd sit back there with Wayne. And we'd have a great time, except in the summertime because that was before air conditioning. So we'd get to town, roll down the windows, and we'd travel along. Well, at every intersection, we'd stop, all of a sudden, we'd hear... And Wayne, we would kind of look around and, well, after a few times, we were the eyes, you know, okay, it's Wayne. He's got his arm out the window banging on the roof. And he would look at us as though it was a mystery. Who's doing this? And he had a great time. And the adults were, you know, kind of just tolerated it, but us kids, we could have called him out on it, but we were like, he's mentally challenged, you know, let's just have fun with it. So we'd always have fun with it and we'd be just with him. Well, this went on and on and each time, I'm telling you, could have put him on a polygraph, he would have passed it. Nobody knew who was knocking on that roof of that car and we all bought into it collectively and just had a lot of fun with it.
Thirty seconds, please.
Well, it turned out that one day we brought a couple of the kids, some of his school kids with him, and they were in the car too. And when he started knocking on the roof, well, you know what was great was is we were all kind of going along with it, but not his buddies. They were shocked that somebody was knocking on the roof. And they bought into it. Wayne really loved that. And I got to say, that's what it's like watching you guys and our state deal with the GMA.
Time.
It's, it's just like you're the passengers we picked up from that school. Collectively, stupid as rocks. Individually, smart, intelligent, well-thought-out people. But the results are 25 years of failure with that GMA. It's brought us the exact opposite of its intended goal. And then, the wealth that's gone can't fund the mental health things. We, we, we act like we don't care, but the reality is, the wealth that you falter out of the system comes directly from the mental health issues, the things that we should be talking about. Thank you.
Low turnout tonight. Uh, I, uh, was thinking about what's happened here as of recent, uh, and I shared that experience with Ron too, and it was, it's actually quite fitting.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Jason Reimer. Um, I was thinking about these emergency moratoriums we've got going on and the, uh, property valuation thefts that, uh, have gone, are, you guys have basically, uh, forced on us, uh, with all the excuses that you've provided, which are all unacceptable still. Um, we're looking for, uh, emergency tax relief to go along with these emergency takings. I'm thinking maybe upwards of eighty, ninety percent of property value should be immediately, uh, taken and, uh, taken off the roll and spread out amongst the rest of, uh, the county immediately. Now, I know in your smugness, of course, that's ludicrous to you because we already had your thinking described, and it's appalling. Uh, along that line, uh, with the closed-in echo chamber you guys live in, I see six. I'll cut Barbara some slack, but usually there's six different versions of Democrat extremism in front of us. There's nothing else on this nonpartisan body. So congratulations, you've done it to yourselves. We've got 25 years of it here with the Growth Management Act that you guys all have been rooting for and you're almost complete. But, uh, have we seen any, uh, percentage increase in the fish that we're saving? Any studies, any proof to show us the outcome of this growth management and your central planning ideas? Anybody seen anything convincing or impressive even? I haven't. Nothing justifying it other than more bureaucrats, more taxes, and more nincompoops who should be out in the private sector getting a life and a real job. So, uh, what I've done, I don't know if there's anybody I can turn, I've got a special form of delivery printed out this afternoon. I just want to give you each a copy. Feel free to make amendments.
Jason, he can pass.
We'll pass it out for you.
Oh, that's okay. I got this. Uh, yeah, I'm going to come off. I'll give you one, Barbara, but this doesn't apply to you.
Thank you, I guess.
Maybe you give the share of the sap on it. Uh, I was thinking about the, uh, you could amend it, feel, feel free to amend it, but, uh, I would make a suggested amendment with the effective two weeks, uh, from today part, you could change that to immediately. Because after seeing how you guys have come to the conclusions on, uh, these moratoriums and such, we don't want to see how you handle the comprehensive plan and all the boards you've appointed yourself to. You're clearly not competent, be qualified for any of this, and we really would like to see your resignation. So that resignation, uh, sample copy...
Thirty seconds, please.
Uh, we're happy to take those. Debbie Adelstein, I'm sure, will be in tomorrow, and we'd like some new elections with some new opportunities to place real representatives for our districts on this council immediately. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the open session?
Uh, I'm not going to hang around to hear your, about your comprehensive plan. We know it's a joke.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we will close the open session. And we'll move to, uh, items from special committee in the whole to begin with. Uh, first item is a resolution for Washington State Legislature's support of funding for core public health services. This will be the council acting as the Wacom County Health Board. Ms. Brenner?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes five to one with Mr. Mann opposed and Mr. Sedu, excuse. Next is, uh, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Wacom County and Pacific Northwest Guardian Adlitem LLC for the provision of guardian and adlitem services for youth subject to dependencies in Wacom County Superior Court in the amount of $40 per hour up to 4,000 billable hours for 2017. We have to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, do we have somebody from, we have Regi- oh, here comes somebody from staff. Um, I just keep seeing the renewals and extensions of Ad- Guardians Adlitem, and I'm not seeing much with the, um, the, the, uh, the other kind, the volunteer, uh, Cas- the CASA people.
David Reynolds, Superior Court Administrator. Uh, as mentioned at the, uh, 2017, 2018 budget, this is the last time we are entering a contract, we're phasing this contract out. This is the final two years. We have, um...
I'll support it if this is it.
New staff on board, find a new person this year. By the end of this year, it'll be all in-house.
Okay, and are, what's, what's happening with the CASA program? Is it getting better?
We have a second volunteer coordinator. We have a new trainee in April, I'm sorry, in March. Um, currently, these contracts support about 140 youth being, um, represented in CASA and in-house. We have 260 being represented. So, by the end of the next two years, we have to have all, about all 400 youth being represented in-house.
Wow. I, yeah, I just want to explain for anybody who doesn't know, the Guardian Adlitem, they get appointed, they don't have to be, no offense, but they don't really have to be qualified or anything. They take a six-week course, I think it is, or something. Whereas the CASA program is all volunteers, and it's so amazing because most of the volunteers have either had family members or they're just so, they want so much to, to work with the, you know, to represent the children. And I just think it's, it's day and night, so I'm glad that we're moving that way. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sedu, excuse. Uh, next is request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interagency agreement between Wacom County and North Sound Behavioral Health Organization to support the county's behavioral health program and to support regional behavioral health activities in the amount of $498,867.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and that is in your orange substitute pages.
You got it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that all those funds are federal Medicaid or, or state funding, uh, that's just passing through to our programs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six, zero with Mr. Sedu, excuse. Uh, we will now move to council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. First item is appointment per RCW 85.38.070 per N5 to fill vacancy on Drainage District Number Three, Board of Supervisors, Position One. Uh, we have one applicant, Roger Block. I would entertain a motion to appoint. Does this approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I was just going to say, point by acclamation, since there's anybody else.
Well, that's what, what we're going to do.
Yeah.
So, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we will go to now my other list. We will start with the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee. There's two vacancies for partial terms. This will be appointed by acclamation. Uh, one application received was Michael Skehan.
I'll nominate him or move we, move we appoint him.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu, excuse. Next one's a little more complicated. It's the Planning Commission, as we are transitioning from three districts to five. Um, two current members are eligible to reapply. Uh, applicants must be a resident of the new county council district. So, uh, for District Two, we have, uh, two applications received and we have one person that we can appoint. So we have Stephen Jackson and Andrew Rolson, who is the incumbent.
I nominate Stephen Jackson and Andrew Rolson.
Okay, I'll second that, just so we can start talking about it at the same time.
So you nominated both?
I did.
And you seconded?
I seconded.
He seconded.
Okay. Ms. Brenner?
But, yeah, I did. Um, I think they're both very good candidates. I, I just kind of liked to, if somebody's an incumbent and they want to serve their second term, you know, they're allowed two terms, and they want to serve that second term, I, I like to go with that person unless we've had a problem with the person.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Uh, I'd concur with what Ms. Brenner just said, but I'd also add that Andrew Rolson, as I understand, filled out a vacancy on an earlier term, so he hasn't had an opportunity for a full term yet. So that's another reason I would support his position.
Okay. Mr. Donovan?
I would just concur that I think we have two really strong candidates, and in any other situation, I would be really enthusiastic about Mr. Jackson, just looking at his data. Um, wish the district's lined up differently.
Yeah, you and me both.
It's Wes.
I know.
Okay, any, uh, any other discussions? Okay, any other discussions? So if the clerk could call the role, or whatever we call it?
Carl Weimer.
Rolson.
Ken Mann.
Jackson.
Red Brown.
Rolson.
Barry Buchanan.
Rolson.
Barbara Brenner.
Rolson.
Todd Donovan.
Rolson.
That Mr. Rolson has been appointed by votes of four to one, or five to one, with Mr. Sedu excuse. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to encourage Mr. Jackson to apply the next time there's a vacancy.
Yeah.
Okay, the next, we'll move on to county council district three. We can appoint this one by acclamation, we only have one applicant.
I move we approve. Is it a tool?
A tool.
Dismaine, by acclamation.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu excuse. Next is the Portage Bay Shellfish Protection District. We have four vacancies for four-year terms, and we have three applicants, Christine Woodward Lee First and Dory Vallal. We can do this by acclamation for all three.
Let's do it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint all three. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sedu excuse. Next is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have three vacancies for three-year terms. We have, one opening is for the Business Industry Representative, and the other one is for Solid Waste Disposal Facility Representative, and we can do both of these by acclamation. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I would like to say their names, so Amber Jones for the Building Industry Representative and Larry McCarter for the Solid Waste Disposal Facility, and do them by acclamation together.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for appoint these two by acclamation. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu excuse. Okay, moving to the Flood Control Zone District Committee Appointments. We have, we can do all these by acclamation. Special districts, we have two vacancies and two applications, Ron Bronzma and Scott Holz, both incumbents. And we also have, for impacted cities, we have a application received from Robert Bromley, who is an incumbent as well. So I can accept a motion for, to do that by acclamation?
I move approval for all.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu excuse.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, as I'm on this committee and I work closely with these three gentlemen, I'd just like to compliment, compliment them and demonstrate our appreciation for the work that they do.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Birch Bay Watershed and Aquatic Resources Management Advisory Committee, that's otherwise known as BB Warm. We have one vacancy and one application with, from Mr. Scott Holz, he's the incumbent. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move by acclamation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu excuse.
Salute.
So that takes care of our appointments. We're now moving on to introduction items. We have added one item in blue.
We've removed one. Isn't one being removed?
I'm going to remove one.
I thought the last one.
We're going to, that's, that hasn't happened quite yet.
Oh.
It was in my office.
Oh.
When did blue come out?
This afternoon.
Blue came out at 4:10 this afternoon.
I haven't been in my office. I left it.
It's to add, it's to introduce the Title 15 Fireflow stuff that we just.
Oh, wait, okay.
So did we have anybody that wanted to do anything with any of these?
Yeah, well, Carl's going to say it first.
Okay, Mr. Weimer.
Yeah, I'd like to pull number four out and talk about it separately.
Number five, you mean, don't you?
No, I mean number four.
I'm going to pull number five, that's a separate.
Oh, okay.
So you want to pull that out and discuss separately?
And I'm going to withdraw number five, but I'd like to try to explain why.
Okay, withdraw. So we are voting to introduce items one through three and number six. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Sedu excuse. We'll go on to number four and let Mr. Weimer have the floor.
Yeah, that one's coming from me, so I will move that we introduce it, but Karen pointed out, our council pointed out that there's one problem with it that I would like to fix before we introduce it, if that's possible. So I'd like to amend what's in the packet. And basically what it is, if you look on page 349, the very last, be it finally ordained, talks about changing county code 20.92.210. That whole clause should be removed.
Which one?
The very last one, the be it finally ordained.
You just want to remove the whole thing?
Remove it, yep.
Okay.
Which would make the one above it, the be it finally ordained, and then we would remove Exhibit B completely also, because that would be an amendment to Title 20, so that would have to go through the whole docketing process, and that's really not necessary for the intent of this, which is just to clean up a problem that we've noticed with how CEPA's handled in procedures. So that would be in my amendment, and I so moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for an amendment. Discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, this is an introduction thing, so I hadn't looked at the exhibit. Why are, why are we removing B?
Well, B is, would be a text amendment to Title 20, and under our code, a text amendment to Title 20 has to go through the whole docketing procedure.
Oh, okay.
And it's not really needed to accomplish the rest of this.
And Exhibit A?
Exhibit A is amendment to Code Section 16, Title 16, so we don't need to do that. You know, if we introduce this this evening, we'll go to a committee for discussion.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is just for the amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes six to zero. Now we have a motion to, also, did you want to move?
Yeah, I'll move that we introduce it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce. Any discussion?
To introduce it without this, without the?
Correct, with the amendments that we just voted on.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes unanimously with Mr. Sedu excuse. Onto other committee reports, I don't think we had any other committees today.
Mr. Chair, really quick, can I just say for one minute, like, why I'm withdrawing what other number I meant was?
Number five.
Number five. This is an attempt to try to come up with something in the interim ordinance about the water supply to deal with what we're calling projects in the pipeline substantially completed, and I think we're all struggling with what to do with this, and we've been working with staff trying to figure out what to do with this, and this is just an attempt to try to get a discussion going about it. And after an hour or so, an executive session, talking to our council and other attorneys, and talking to other attorneys about this, it's fairly clear that this probably would make it more difficult to reach compliance on this, is more I'd like to be able to say. There was another Supreme Court case December 29th about vesting that makes this even more difficult to deal with, so we're pulling this and hoping that we can get to some kind of resolution about how people who are really far along in the process of nearing a building permit who need exempt wells, some kind of settlement that deals with them, and I hope maybe this gives some impetus to that, but on advice of pretty much everyone, I'm pulling it, so.
Thanks, council member Donovan.
Yes.
Well, I just want to say, I thought there were some excellent parts to it. There was only one thing that I actually, and it was a number, not a, not whether to do it or not, but it was a number. So I thought it was terrific. So I'm not going to.
It might not be legal.
I'm not voting to get rid of it.
No, it's withdrawn, so.
Oh, withdrawn, I guess there's something I can do.
You don't need to.
Yeah.
The originator withdrew.
Okay, so with no other committee reports, other items of business for the council? Does anyone have anything?
In terms of future things we want to be talking about?
No, today.
Okay, today, no.
Okay, we'll move to council member updates. Anybody have anything? Yes, Mr. Weimer.
Yeah, I did attend the celebration where, up in Drayton Harbor, where 800-plus acres of shellfish beds got reopened after years and years and years of work trying to clean up a whole variety of different problems, and it was a very cold evening, I think it was 22 degrees.
I was going to say, I bet you froze.
And they were serving oysters outdoors, and there was a big crowd, I was surprised, so it was very good.
We wanted to go, but there was no way.
So it does show that if you keep plugging away little steps at a time, you can have success in these things.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report?
I have a question on that celebration. Were they cooked or were they fresh?
There were some of both.
At 22 degrees.
Yeah, there were some broiled ones and there were some raw ones.
I attended the interfaith service that was actually led, I'm not sure if it was organized, but certainly the emcee was council member Sedu, and unfortunately, he's not here for me to compliment him on what he did in the service. It was a very interesting process where I think it was, I think it was 12 or, no, it might have been 16 different faiths within the local community were represented, so that was up at the Sikh temple. Again, Mr. Sedu's not here, but if he was, I'd compliment him.
Okay.
I recently attended, along with Councilmember Brenner and Councilmember Sedu, and council, I mean, excuse me, Executive Lyles was there, we attended the Portage Bay Partnership signing out at Lummi, in the end, Business Council Chambers. It was, we're going to hear more about it, they're just formed this partnership, it's with seven or eight dairy farmers and Lummi Nation as to how they can work together to meet everybody's goals, to really focus on working together, and once they get things kind of off the ground, I've invited them to come and make a presentation in council chambers to hear all about that. So it was pretty exciting, it was really exciting to see all that great will and working together the way they're going to be doing, so I'm very impressed.
Ms. Brenner?
You took the words right out of my mouth. You got them.
Okay, with no other business before the council, we are adjourned.